I want to welcome everyone to the Racial Equity and Policing Commission meeting for Thursday, March nine. I will be leading this meeting in place of our Chair, Tanya Hockins, who will not be able to be in attendance tonight. So we'll go ahead and start with roll call. Let's start with the people online. Commissioner Salazar Hall will start with you.
Hi, Nicole Salazar Hall, Commissioner.
I'm Darlie McDonald, Commissioner.
Oh, next, please, just continue, Commissioner.
I'm Dia Uman, Commissioner.
Verona Sinalta Malna, Commissioner.
And I believe that's everyone online, so we'll welcome the commissioners in the room. We'll start with Commissioner Summerfield.
Hello.
Yes, we're gonna use these mics, so turn it on and I'll turn green.
I think, is this green? You have to put the button as it says. Yeah, okay, Julie's here. Is that her?
Yeah, just kind of, yeah, to talk kind of close well, I see.
Yeah, Commissioner Summerfield's here. Commissioner Katie Durant is here.
We are from Mayor Executive Assistant to the Chief FBI Officer.
I'm Jay Jacobson. I'm the guest tonight. I'm representing the Jewish Federation's Community Partners Against Hate.
My name is Michelle Muni. I'm the manager of the city mayor's office.
Mia Tedes, Equity Social Politics and Turn Here.
And I'm Chief Mike Brown, so let's do this, girl.
So we'll begin with our open dialogue. During this portion of the meeting, commissioners may raise topics and discuss current events that may impact or influence the commission's overall work, discussions, and deliberations to provide recommendations to the mayor and city council regarding Salt Lake City Police Department's policies, budget, and culture. No action will be taken during this section of the meeting. Matters discussed during this section of the meeting may be scheduled on a subsequent agenda for follow-up. Are there any items from the commissioners for open dialogue? Going once, going twice. We're gonna move on to public comment, however, there's no guests from the public attending or online. So we'll go ahead and skip that section and we'll move into our approval and adoption of the February twenty twenty-three minutes. Is there a motion on the floor to accept and approve these minutes? Approved. Okay, motion by Commissioner Katie Duranty. And is there a second?
No second.
Okay, Commissioner Summerfield, I heard you first, but all in favor, just raise a virtual hand or show your hand if you're on camera for the commissioners. Okay, looks like a unanimous poll. So we'll go ahead and accept and approve, um, the February twenty twenty-three minutes. And then we'll move on to Chief, Chief of Chief Toronto on the agenda.
Okay. My guest is my guest on the.
Yes, I see Chief Hawn on here.
All right.
I just see him the right.
Well, commissioners, thank you. It's, uh, I, um, I've given you time away from our distinguished guests, but I'd like to introduce you to Chief Daniel Hawn. He served in law enforcement for thirty-four years. He was the chief in Sacramento and Roseville, California. I know him through the Vanuatu Chiefs Association. He's been a leader among leaders. He has since retired. He's, uh, he has a very flourishing career as a public speaker. What really drew me to Chief Hawn is that he presented once for a bunch of chiefs from all around the country. He's a chief from the largest agencies in our country. And he spoke about racism and how it has infiltrated into law enforcement. And he really brought a different perspective, which was really, uh, when we heard it as chiefs, it very resonated with law enforcement. Uh, one of the things that the commission has recommended is that we try to train, um, our officers into the social biases, the systemic racism, the racism that actually has kind of injected law enforcement over the years. And so, uh, with that, I couldn't think of anybody better to talk about this topic where law enforcement would sit and listen to a chief talk about this kind of from one of their homes. So with that, I ask Chief Hawn if he wouldn't mind giving us a quick sample of what he, he would like to present. I think we have a, a project bid from him and the board of commission. He'd like to perhaps, well, but this is a virtue to have, and I guess if he would like to bring us all this. So Chief Hawn, thank you again for being here.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. And can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Uh, well, that, thank you, and I, it's an honor to speak in front of this commission. I, I think it's pretty impressive that you even have a commission like this, so uh, that's, that's exciting all of it in it of itself and that you're working with law enforcement. That is also, I think, a, a great, uh, kudos for, to all of you. But I, I wanted to maybe just real quickly kind of say how I got into this and how we started doing this in Sacramento and around in many other departments, uh, in California and around the country. So a little bit more about myself. I, I grew up here in Sacramento. I was born and raised here. I was given up for adoption at birth. And my mom and dad adopted me at three months old. And I grew up in a inner-city neighborhood here in Sacramento that, um, our house was right on the stroll where women were being trafficked uh, pretty much twenty-four hours a day. There was drugs being dealt. In later part, as I was getting ready to graduate from high school, was the start of the crack epidemic that we probably all heard of, which brought even more crime to, uh, the neighborhood I grew up in. Uh, I witnessed my first murder when I was nine years old with my older brother. We were the only witnesses to a guy that got shot multiple times in front of our house. I was arrested for assault on an officer, on a Sacramento police officer when I was sixteen. And my younger brother in nineteen ninety-two got involved in drugs and was murdered in downtown Sacramento. So in my neighborhood, uh, there wasn't a whole lot of trust for law enforcement. And so I never even imagined being a police officer. It never even crossed my mind to be a police officer. So without going into those details, I kind of stumbled into law enforcement with every intention of quitting once I graduated from college and ultimately ended up with a thirty-four-year career with the last eleven being a police chief, uh, in Sacramento, my hometown. And for about six years, I left to be, uh, police chief in a suburb of Sacramento called Roseville. So about ten, a little over ten years ago, long before George Floyd, our own controversial shitting here in Sacramento, Stefan Clark, uh, and many others around the country that we know all too well in the last decade or so, I thought to myself that there's got to be more reasons why there's this, um, very emotional, very, um, highly-charged divide between law enforcement and the community. And obviously, I knew some of that because I grew up in a community that didn't too much care for law enforcement. But it was just so deep and intense that I thought there must be more to this than I even know. And so I set out to do some research on history to try to find out what, how we got here. And my intention was to teach what I learned to the management team in Roseville. Uh, but once I started doing the research, I really, uh, was engrossed in it and I'll, I'll be doing it for the rest of my life, I'm sure. So ultimately, that turned, I did teach the management team, but it ultimately turned into a ten- or eleven-hour course that I combined with implicit bias uh, that I teach to police departments, private companies, uh, educational institutions. I just taught it to the, uh, the very famous art museum that we have in town, all the docents there. And so here's the, here's what I found, um, a- as I'll go over a few of the things. If I ask people in our community, why the neighborhood I grew up in is the way it is, which is the way it is, what I mean when I ask people is high crime, high poverty. Uh, the answer I typically get is very centered on the people that actually very focused on individuals that live there. So the answers I get is, are usually things like, well, people there just would get a job. If the fathers would just stay in the homes, then we wouldn't have the problems that we had there. And people that live there are just violent. So very people-centered on the actual people that live in that neighborhood. But if you know the history of my community, which I never did, going to school my whole life in the community I grew up in, I was never taught this. If you learn the history of my community and many communities across our country, you'd know that that is not the reason why that community is like that. It's through urban renewal, housing discrimination, um, where we built freeways, how we built freeways is what created a pocket of poverty and then crime came. So those are two totally different, like, causes that would bring totally different responses. And so if I thought it was focused on the people that they were lesser than or something, that bring, that, that might uh, imply that you need to send cops in there and just do enforcement. But if you knew the truth about how that community became that way, then it might include other things and have different, um, outcomes. So for example, if you go to the doctor, your doctor's gonna be asking you a lot of questions about your history of what, because he want, he or she wants to get to the root of what your illness is. Because they want to solve the root. But for some reason, we don't always seem to do that in our community. So, for example, in this course, I talk about, um, in the African-American community, how slavery was reinforced, how doctors and scientists and prominent pastors preached that, uh, black people were like closest to the animal kingdom and were lazy and violent and couldn't survive on their own. And that reinforced the need for slavery be, and it reinforced the belief that, um, this group of people cannot live on their own. So slavery's good. And that turned into caricatures like Coon and Sambo and Mammy and Picanini, and those were reinforced with movies and caricatures um, that continued to reinforce that this group of people were less than other people. And it plays out to this day because in these, uh, these studies that scientists and doctors did that eventually turned into eugenics and other, uh, forms of science, um, a lot of these studies that were printed in medical journals concluded that African-Americans were like monkeys or apes. And I think we've all heard black people called monkey or ape in today's age. Well, that's where it came from. Um, so we might say slavery was a long time ago, but there's still a lot of remnants of slavery in today's society. If you take Native Americans at one, at some of these same studies, would, uh, there was a, a gentleman that, a scientist that did a study in the eighteen twenties and eighteen thirties that collected skulls from around the world and filled them with lead pellets. And he came to conclusions about different races based on the size of a skull and how many lead pellets would, um, fit in there. And you might think that this was a fly-by-night scientist. No, this was a prominent scientist that did this. And not only did he conclude the same things about African-Americans, but in this study, he concluded that Native Americans were fond of war by how many pellets fit in their skulls. Um, and that they were savages and things like that. So ultimately, later on, all the way up until the mid to late nineteen seventies, we had these institutions called Native American boarding schools where the first missionary boarding schools, uh, their motto was to civilize and Christianize the Native American children. So if we have to civilize a group of people, what does that mean we currently think they are? And so in these schools, we would, uh, cut their hair, we would change their names, we would forbid them from speaking, uh, uh, their native language and take, uh, and take part in their native customs. The next Native American boarding schools came about were called the Carlisle Schools. And their motto was kill the Indian and save the man. So instead of literally killing a Native American child, it really meant kill all the Native American in that child. So same sort of things, cut their hair, change their language, those sort of things, because we had these beliefs about certain people. Same with Chinese and Japanese people in our country, uh, the concentration camps where we would literally have Japanese children fighting in our military uniform in the war and lock their parents up because we thought their parents would sabotage our country. And now we are currently seeing a rise in anti-Asian hate crimes that have, has its roots in some of these things that have happened in our past. And so, um, I, I'm a firm believer, if we're going to change neighborhoods and we're going to, um, evolve the way I think we should, then we have to understand how we got here. So I call the course that I put together that includes implicit bias in this history, I call it a way forward. Because in order for us, for our officers, for our community people to really make good decisions on how we can change tomorrow for all people, we have to fully understand how we got here and what are the causes of our current situation. And so I, I'll end on sharing a slide that's specific to Salt Lake City and a few other cities that I might note, none of which are in the South. Um, hold on. Uh. So, as you might imagine, I imagine you are afflicted with some of this in Salt Lake City, too. What I get a lot in, um, California is because we entered the union as a free state and because we're the West Coast and because of what we were taught in school a lot of times, it's like we didn't have any of these issues that the South had. And we didn't have things like redlining and slavery. Um, but we had all of them. We had slavery in California. We had hundreds and hundreds of slaves via the Fugitive Slave Act. But this slide you see is, I had never heard of this before I did my history research, but this is a restaurant called The Coon Chicken Inn. It originated in Salt Lake City in nineteen twenty-five. A husband and wife started it. It was one of the first restaurants to have delivery service. Um, many of the restaurants had a nightclub attached to them called The Cotton Club. But these are pictures. The one in the middle is of Seattle. And the front doorway, the entrance to the Coon Chicken Inn was, uh, a stereotypical coon or porter, a train porter. Um, and the front door was through the teeth of that caricature you see at the front. So they opened in Salt Lake City in nineteen twenty-five and closed in nineteen fifty-seven. They opened in Seattle in nineteen twenty-nine and closed in nineteen forty-nine and opened in Portland in nineteen thirty and closed in nineteen forty-nine. It was a wildly popular restaurant. That car you see in front of the Seattle restaurant was called The Coon Car. Um, and they had the license plate, or excuse me, the, the spare tire cover on the back of the car had, uh, the logo and it said Coon Car on the back. Well, when they opened in Salt Lake, or when they opened in Seattle, um, the Seattle NAACP sued them. And the lawsuit was settled. It was a defamation lawsuit, uh, based on these caricatures. Uh, the lawsuit was settled by changing the color of the porter at the front, the porter coon caricature at the front from having black skin and they changed it to blue. And they agreed not to sell any more of the spare tire covers. That would, that settled the lawsuit. Um, also in Seattle at that same time, uh, the NAACP sued a packaging company, packaging, uh, outfit that had a peanut product that they called the Three Little N-words, but they spelled it out. And the logo on their, um, package was three little black children sitting in a peanut shell. So these are, this is all the way into the, almost the sixties that this restaurant existed. And it wasn't in the South. It was in Seattle and Portland and Salt Lake City. And the media covered the grand opening and covered all sorts of things about the restaurant and never once covered the protests over the restaurant, the lawsuit over the restaurant. So only pro-restaurant type stuff. They had, um, uh, things on the menu. So the picture on the far left is, is their menu. And the dinners were called Southern Fried Coon Chicken, Baby Coon Special, uh, Coon Fried Steak. And they had their logo and their name printed on all sorts of things such as, um, menus, placemats, plates, cups, bowls, toothpick holders, matchbox, newspaper ads. Um, so this was not in the eighteen hundreds, in the seventeen hundreds. This is based on these stereotypes and these caricatures that came from the seventeen and eighteen hundreds and still exist, uh, to this day in many cases. I mean, I've been called a coon. I've been called all these stereotypical names. Um, and so that's what we, um, or what I teach not only to officers but to the community as well. Um, and then I also teach how our communities transform. The community I grew up in that was an inner-city, high-poverty, um, high-crime area, I had never known growing up that that used to be, that was actually the original suburb of the original city of Sacramento. And it was an upper-middle-class neighborhood that was a thriving neighborhood. But I never knew that growing up. I had always thought it was the way it was when I grew up there. And so when we talk about the things that transformed these neighborhoods through urban renewal and housing discrimination and freeway construction and so many other things, it brings a little bit more understanding to officers and communities, um, of how we got to where we're at. And in my opinion, helps people make better decision of what we need to do tomorrow to make, uh, life better for all people in our community. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And thank you again, Chief, for, uh, allowing me to speak.
Mr. Chief? Anything for the Chief?
Oh, I think it's, uh, I think it's a worthwhile, I would like to go through his, his, uh, his program just because, you know, just learning and understanding and, and hopefully that we can break down more barriers that exist. And I think that's, that, that's just highly important at this time in, in this day and age right now because we really suffer from barriers being built. Uh, you know, getting stronger and stronger because of the temperature that's up there and where we're at. I think that, yeah, definitely. I would love to go through some of that myself.
I don't know, Chief, did you hear his comments? He, I wasn't very much in support of the program, actually. Maybe extending the program a little bit here, some of the classes you put on, but anything else, commissioners?
Um. Commissioner McDonald, you have your.
Oh, there you have it.
Yes.
Hi. Um, first of all, I want to say, wow. Um, thank you very much for giving us a little snapshot of what that training is like. I too would love to be able to take that training as well, just so that I can see what's being presented. I do want to ask, how, how is it received, um, when you present this training?
Yeah, um, it's, you know, there's always, uh, it, it varies a little bit on group, but usually there's some that, um, resist it. Uh, there's a lot that, uh, I guess for lack of a better word, it feels like the light bulb comes on. Um, and people are like, wow, uh, I never knew that. Uh, how come I never knew that? And I always usually ask them at the beginning of class, when you, when we get done, if you haven't heard all of this stuff, ask yourself why? Why were we not taught these things? And so I do it in a very non-accus, I've seen people teach implicit bias and some of these type of courses before that are very accusatory. But I do not teach it in that because, um, there's no group in our country that hasn't done something pretty bad to another group. And to me, the important thing is for everybody to understand how we got here. So then we can use that knowledge in making decisions moving forward. So for the most part, it's, it, it's pretty well, but there's always people that think either digging up the past is not the right thing to do. Uh, I had one person say that will just give young people an excuse not to achieve if they know this. A- and my answer to that is, well, we do teach history. Uh, so why should we teach some history and not all history? And my answer to the gentleman that said his, because he was a teacher. And so he said, if I teach this to my students, then they'll just have an excuse of why they can't be more successful. And I'm like, well, parts of society tell your students, I think, that they're not supposed to be successful now. But now they would know the reason why, where that comes from, why certain groups are, are, have those stereotypes. And I think it will help them be successful. So for the most part, it's pretty well-received, but there's, you know, this is a sensitive topic. So, you know, it's not going to be everybody, uh, jumping up and cheering at the end of the course. Um, it, it usually gets pretty heavy. And, uh, it's not unusual for people to tear up or, uh, get kind of emotional at parts, but for the most part, it's well-received.
Is that a possibility, um, Chief, that we could also attend the training?
Yeah, certainly. Um, the intention was, I, um, I can't fly Chief, uh, Hawn into town every time we do this training. And because it would be fine, and we'd have, we'd have to put him up here and get him asked for. But we'd like to have him, what we're thinking about is having him do a very professional made, um, video studio break and then we can actually present it here and he can talk through these graded, both part conversations. And then we can have community members, uh, in the training with us. And they can bring it in even further from, you know, where he's talking about to bringing it right down to the grassroots of the communities we serve in Salt Lake City. I know Pastor Davis actually has some memorabilia from that restaurant. On Island Drive, he still has menus, yes, with toothpicks, things like that. But I think all of our communities of color feel, feel that way. And there are things that we would love to have those conversations in here. But I think that really sets the stage and gives us a great perspective as to how we can keep moving forward. And I really like the way Chief Hawn talks about it's non-acusative. This is the history, this is what's happened, and this is how we're gonna have to go forward. I think he may have dropped off.
I have a question for you, Chief.
Yeah.
How did you perceive this when you were, when you, when you first got in touch with this gentleman and what did you think of some of the, some, some of the materials and stuff like that?
It was, it was, it's like I said, when, when he presented to, he presented to a room full of chiefs.
Oh, okay.
And so a lot of us were just like, he said, it's like, wow, are you kidding me? And then when he said, this is just Salt Lake City, I, I just got fell on my chair. I said, are you kidding me?
I know.
You know, I didn't know that. So I felt the very same way that, uh, Chief Hawn's talking about. I was, I was like, why didn't I know that? You know, that, that has such a big impact in our community. Why didn't I know?
Okay, so is there a cost associated with this?
Yes, I was gonna bring it back to cost. So we're stuck on the content. We're stuck on the content and we're not doing a formal vote. I do wanna say that, but I did send out the slides that Lieutenant Fluff presented on in our last meeting. So Chief Hawn, while we have you on the line, the request that we received was nine thousand dollars. And with the nine thousand dollars, it includes developing the presentation, rental of the recording studio, recording time and equipment. Um, on this slide, it also says it does not include lighting budget. If they do need Chief Hawn to come down to Salt Lake City. And yeah, that's pretty much it. So the nine thousand again comes with developing the presentation, rental of the recording studio, and recording time and equipment.
Yeah, and just let me jump in here, Chief Hawn. I want to talk to Chief Hawn. I said, give me, give me some ballpark numbers. So he, he very, you know, graciously gave me some numbers. I don't know, Chief, if, if you, if there's, if you need to, you know, put more pen and paper and the chair for those, that's kind of a ballpark number.
Yeah, so how I would prefer it work is I can just record the, um, our intro in, here in Sacramento and send it to you, obviously, to use with the Salt Lake City Police Department and Salt Lake City, city employees.
Hey, can I ask a question? So, uh, aside from Salt Lake City and Sacramento, have you done this around the country? How many other places? Have you had some presentation?
Yeah, so I've presented, uh, any number of different length versions. So I, I do the full version uh, for the Sacramento Police Department, all their recruits as they got out of the academy, which is a ten-hour day. Um, but any, all the other ones range from anywhere from ten hours, sometimes that's broken into like five different sessions to one hour to thirty minutes. It just depends. So I just got back from Tulsa, doing it at a con, presenting at a conference in Tulsa. I just got back from Tulsa, doing it at a, presenting at a conference in Tulsa. As Chief mentioned, I presented at the Major City Chiefs, which was in DC, I was virtual, but it was in. And I presented to police departments. In the Bay Area and Sacramento, including. Like the Sacramento County Office of Education, I'm currently doing a series for them, a series of. Five different sessions, two hours, two, five two hour sessions, so. Probably 20 or 30 different places and I get calls pretty much every week for additional ones.
Is there any type of? Follow up? Like come back. A year later or a few months later to see. How has the training impacted engagement?
Yeah, that's a great question, so no, not as of yet. But I think, I'm guessing the reason why you asked that question. Is something that I'm also very interested in because I'm a firm believer that. Especially on a topic like this. Which is also why I think some people resist it because say they're in their 40s now. But for 40 years, they've heard one thing and all of a sudden this one guy comes in front of them and adds some. Stuff that might contradict what they've learned for 40 years. Well, of course, there's going to be people that resist that, right, like. It seems pretty logical to me and I'm also a firm believer that it can't just be. A class and expect like. People's light bulbs to go off and all of a sudden everything changes, it's gotta be a continual thing. Needs to be followed up, so like for example, in the Sacramento Police Department, we would present this. But there were other things that we had as part of. Entire kind of thing, so we had a thing we called Walk in My Hues. Where we would have officers spend the day with a community member. In the community, doing whatever the community member did, but then the following month, that community member would also go on a ride along with the officer. Because it's important that everybody learns about the experiences of another person. And then the third month, they'd come together and share what they. Learned and we'd also take the academy recruits out to, every Friday, they would do community service. Side by side with kids at an elementary school. And things like that, that were ongoing, we had Friday night peace walks where we'd take. The officers out and walk the community with, with the community. So it wasn't just a class, but it was also this experiential. Kind of learning that was ongoing. That often reinforced, so I'll give you one example, I imagine. You experienced some of this in Salt Lake City too, but in the wake of George Floyd, we had some. Probably a two years straight of very large. And at times, very contentious protests. As you, as you know, Sacramento is the capital of California, so we're no stranger to protests, but. These protests were very large, the only time the NBA has ever been blocked in the history of the NBA happened twice here in Sacramento during this time. And so I had assigned, you know, when you take a promotion test within the police department, at least in Sacramento. It's a written test and then a oral panel kind of process. And traditionally, there was always a book assigned that the applicants would have to read a book and they were typically. Like big thick college. Sometimes very boring textbooks on like leadership, the different types of leadership and. I remember when I was taking those tests, I always thought, man, I hate reading this book. Like, this is not helping me much. And so for example, one of the books, when I became chief, I, I went away from those leadership books. As officers go to leadership training all the time. So I assigned a book that's called, the first book I assigned was The Post Traumatic Slave Syndrome. By Dr. Joy Degru. And there was a lot of pushback for that book, not by everybody, but there was, there was a significant amount of pushback, what does this have to do with the police department? What does this have to do with leadership? And so I would just ask people, would you have read this book? If it wasn't required for the sergeant's test and every single person told me no. I go, that's why you're reading the book, I don't expect you to agree with everything. I don't, I don't even need you to, want you to agree with everything, I don't agree with everything in the book. But. There are people that do and we serve this whole community and you need to understand where they're coming from. And what's behind their beliefs. And so I mentioned that there was a lot of pushback. But after the protests went on, I had multiple people that took the sergeant's test come up to me. And go, I witnessed firsthand. What was in that book play out in these protests, what people were yelling at me and screaming. And so they weren't, they weren't kind of believers in expanding their experience when I assigned the book. But six months later, they were because they saw. What was talked about in the book play out in front of their face, so I don't think. In, in our society that keeps some of this stuff hidden to a certain degree. That you'll have. This immediate thing happen. But I do believe over time, especially if you have ongoing programs like I think the chief does. That you will see transformation and I do think it would be a good idea. And I retired before we implemented some of that stuff, but to have some sort of. Kind of study or research on. What is the difference that these programs make? I do think that's a good idea, which is I think why you asked that question.
What was the second book, so you have The Post Traumatic Slave Syndrome, what was the second one?
I assigned Biased by Jennifer Eberhart from Stanford University and I'm. Having a hard time remembering what the third book was. I'll probably think of it before we get off, but it was always a book that. Would expand people's experience and I always told them, I don't expect you to agree with everything in this book, I just want you to read something that you wouldn't normally read.
I have a question. So Chief Brown, is that's your name? So he was mentioning that he had some tests, maybe that's included in the course, but. What is your vision in regards to your officers in regards to. Getting this recording every year, maybe every other year, like what's your vision in regards to your officers? Going through this training?
Yeah, as Commissioners, we've been talking about this for. Almost 18 months to two years and it's taken a while to kind of position. To identify a group and my vision is that we would do this in the department, all 500, 600 officers. And another 120 professional staff. But I'm very much like Chief Hawn, you can't check the logs, it can't be one and done. You're gonna have to do this every year, the follow up or expanded one. Read different books, have different conversations, this, this is something that needs to be talked about all the time.
Well, I ask because I work for instead of Utah and I do have to go through the ethnic racial. Training and I feel like a lot of my coworkers just take it as, oh, it's just another, you know, module I have to get rid of. Pass it by a certain time and it doesn't seem like it's got any questionnaires that are. But I see that the IT. Video and training has to have all pass a certain, you know, criteria that it needs to be going through. I mean, and that makes sense, right, for purposes like that, but I'd be curious to know like. You know, how are they going to be evaluated, kind of like the follow up, like they were talking about?
Yeah, I would first like to give the course here that we really want to have. And I want to have a course where it's not just check the logs, you go through a PowerPoint and answer with your questions, you already know the questions, you're supposed to, you know, click and hear that. I want to have a conversation where we stand, we sit in a room face to face and we have these hard conversations, because I think that's where you're gonna move, I think that's where you're going to. Like Chief Hawn talks about, you're gonna see emotion, you're gonna have hard conversations, you're gonna see cheerful reactions. That's what we want and that's, that's the oriented environment I think that we're striving for. And as we've talked, Commissioner Missal Zarholl, we've talked about this for quite some time. And we've been looking for kind of the right form. When I heard Chief Hawn talk about it, it was, it was something different. Than just your standard biased racial, you know, training and that's why it resonated with me. I agree.
Thank you, and I, and I feel comfortable saying like. You have already two people that said that they would like to participate in certain like trainings on that, I think that. That would definitely for me, make me feel comfortable in regards to, like you said, just opening, opening up that discussion, right? Because we, we tend to tense up in closed discussion that are important topics. And so I think that that would be, you know, sometimes very important and maybe some people that will attend may get out of their comfort zone. And that's kind of how we learn, I guess. So that'd be great.
If it's a training where you can sit there and look at your ball all the time, it's not a training. Good question, thank you.
Thank you.
So does everyone feel like they have their questions answered, I do want to set a reminder out there, because I know it can be confusing with the training. So we're looking at five hours total of training, right Chief?
Right.
That's with the three facilities, like we're not picking between Chief Hawn and the facility, I want to make that clear. Like Chief Hawn will be one section of this training and then Equality Talk, one section of this training, True Empowering, one, one section of this training. As well as Legal Equity Advocates, one section of this training and the last hour is just gonna be. Open for the other identities that we may not be covered in that. So is everyone clear, I'm just getting some questions online, I want to make sure that Chief Hawn is here. Just discussing his proposal or proposed budget and this is just one section.
It's a whole training. It's a whole training book. That's what I wanted.
There'll be, yes, five hours is just like, that's one training session.
Yeah, I was just thinking Chief Hawn has a great way just to start the conversation.
Yes.
Kind of a keynote and come in and kind of pick over the old ways we think about things and start talking about.
I get it.
I would be interested in the whole training as well. Well, you know, I will.
I, I'd be interested too.
Maybe they need, you need to fly Chief Hawn here and do a full 10 hour course.
So if, so thank you for being with us today, first of all, and I appreciate that you. Seem to ground your training in like structural inequalities. Like I heard some primological theory in there, so that's good. Since it's a recording, you know, we're talking about this room right now, we're having a conversation, I can think that as one downside, right? I do also understand that we can't physically fly you out here and train 600 people. Over and over again. But I think that's something just to be discussed, is that it's hard to facilitate a conversation around, like, do we have somebody in mind who can facilitate a post conversation? Is somebody in the police department prepared to do that, that's my thing.
I mean, I'm hearing a lot of options here, especially with Chief Hawn's talking about their courses. We, we have three academies, sometimes four academies a year, we would like to have this training within our academies. Maybe it's something that Commissioner would like to explore to see if we want to have Chief Hawn come into town. Four days a year, if he's just starting recruits, that really embed it into your, to your, your culture and then. We'd like to train the entire department, but I don't know, we just can't do that.
Well, you did mention that you don't have the funding for maybe commuting him to here, but you know. Technology has advanced and over the COVID Zoom call, what are we doing right now through Zoom, right? I mean, it makes it accessible and it still brings that conversation open. I think that that would be also an option.
Yeah, I mean, Chief Hawn, would you be. Perhaps if we had you to come in live on a Zoom. Teaching type thing or so, that would be a little more impactful, have you rather just a video, maybe something that we could. Have you part of class, answer your questions?
Or even if it was. If it was a video, but then he can come in and just facilitate a discussion after the video.
Yeah, let me, let me throw, throw something out, I'm open to discussing anything. This commission is interested in, but. Just from past experience, so. I mentioned that I, I used to teach this to the recruits in their last, actually. All of our recruits go to another month of training after they graduate from the academy, so it's in that month that I would do this for a 10 hour block. But I also taught it to the veteran officers and what we call CBT, which is. New education that they have to do every year and that was a shorter block, a two hour block. So we did do it in different ways with different groups, but I will say the recruits. Know 10 in general, they're younger officers, I mean, probably the average age of somebody going through the academy is like. 25 ish around that area. And I'll tell you, there was a, there was usually a distinct difference between the academy recruits. And the veteran officers, meaning that, you know, they're more like my kid's age, their mind is a lot more open, so I think there is some. Very good usefulness to get them at that stage when they're graduating from the academy or in that. Setting. Get them a good start and a good open mind of looking at things. Because you know, the longer you're around and the longer you stay in certain environments, it has a tendency to kind of shape. What you think and then, so, and I'd also say, I've done it both virtually. I've done, I teach at Sac State, so a lot of the classes I teach at Sac State. I include a lot of this in my class and, and probably 50% of the classes are virtual. But it is way more impactful in person, so. I say that to say that if you wanted to do the four academy classes, I would recommend those be in person. And if you wanted to combine that with shorter trainings that are partially online, like the chief was having for an hour intro. Of this stuff. To lead into four or five more hours with somebody actually in person with people, I think that works for other groups too. So I'm, I'm open to whatever you want to. Propose in the future.
I wanted to clarify, because I don't know if I. Heard accurately what the conversation or the comment was. But I think it has something to do with whether or not it should be in person or virtual, and I would just, my. My feedback that I think this type of, of training should be done in person. As much as possible. If there's a way that we can facilitate that, then I think that's the way we should go. These types of conversations should be having, having person.
Okay, I do want to be mindful of time and these are really real questions. Chief Hawn, would you be able to send Chief Brown or Lieutenant Clough like a full proposal, like these different options that they can look at? Just because the other consultants, that's what we're reviewing right now in our subcommittees. We're going through different packets of just different. Price proposals, I think that would be the best thing, like if you were to fly out here, if you weren't to fly out here, if you're gonna be on to. If every option, if you already have it, if that's great, I think that would be the best. Bet for the commission in order to make an informed decision. All, and I did want to remind the Commissioners, all other consultants will be doing it in person, it was just. This specific part of the session, we were thinking of a video that can last long term. You do bring forth great points, but I do want to be mindful, we will have to move on with the rest of the agenda shortly.
If it's okay with the Commission and Chief Hawn, how about if me and you have some more, some more conversation in the next week? We'll, we'll talk about some different options and then we'll come back and talk to the Commission again, if that makes sense?
It's great sense.
Yep.
Yes, something just being right, and just the subcommittees aren't meeting and that's where they're probably gonna have the most meaningful discussions. Since these are so tight and I want to be mindful of everyone's time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
And Chief Hawn, thank you for your time, I know you were gonna go watch your daughter play softball and you've made time for us, so.
Thank you, appreciate all the work that all of you do and thank you Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if you, the Commissioners, have any other questions, please email them to me, I do want to use this as a reminder that on February 23rd, I sent you all an email. With the proposals from Equality Talk, True Empowering and the presentation from last month's meeting. In that presentation, that's where you will find the numbers for the Legal Equity Advocate. If you have questions or concerns. Please try to get that to me and review all of the information, because I do want to know what kind of questions you all have as we're going through this information. So I know it is a lot of information, however, I want to give you as much time. That's why we won't be voting on it right away, because there, the numbers are, these are large numbers, right? So what the consultants included, so please. Take the time and I can resend the email if you think you haven't received it. So next, we're gonna move on to our presentation on hate crimes with Jay Jacobson, so I'll pull up your slides for you Jay. And we'll pass the time over to you.
Thank you very much, Michelle, while you're doing that, I just try to make what I think is a very logical transmission. First of all, it's a privilege to be able to talk to your commission. As I said at the introduction, I'm here representing an organization formed about 2017. Our Jewish Federation of Utah responding to. Our Jewish congregation in Utah, responding to anti-Semitic incidents in Europe, uh, as well as some early signals from the United States, decided to form a task force on anti-Semitism. Uh, you would know that in twenty eighteen, uh, there was still the historically most awful attack on the Jewish community in the United States, Pittsburgh, where eleven people were killed while they were praying on a Sabbath day. So the formation of that task force was unfortunately pre-scient for our country. Uh, I don't think any of us expected to see something of that magnitude here. But it didn't occur by itself. Um, you would recall from that period, the Charlottesville March, uh, where a young woman was killed and where the marchers, um, mostly white male Americans, uh, representing far-right communities, you know, Nazi groups, white synchrobasis groups and white Asians, chanted, "We, or Jews will not replace us." That's actually a part of a very prevalent belief about being replaced by part of our population. And it doesn't just refer to Jews, it refers to immigrants, to Asians, to virtually anyone who looks or acts or believes differently than the group that is most concerned about that untrue idea that they would be replaced. That is, it's a flawed idea to begin with, but it's a powerful belief. Because so many other groups were targeted, we started, started seeing an increase in hate crimes, targeting different groups. Um, and we'll talk about that in a little more detail, because there are groups that have been historically, and I choose that word because the chief used it, historically targeted in this country. Jews have been historically targeted for now almost twenty-five hundred years. Um, but what's so striking about this epidemic of hate crimes is the old targets remain and are vulnerable and are seeing more attacks and more violence, but new target groups have been added. So from the Task Force on Anti-Semitism, we expanded to something that we've called Community Partners Against Hate. And intriguingly, there's been overlap with this group for some time. So we're well aware of your commission and the work that you're doing. But hopefully, that overlap provides a conduit of information going in both directions. For example, Pastor Davis, that was alluded to earlier, who's actually a historian of some significance, is very aware of the history that this police chief talked about in Salt Lake and a great deal more. He also sits with us as a partner. Uh, we try to have at the table partners that represent each of what we've come to call both vulnerable and targeted communities. And as I've said to you, that list keeps growing. So around the table, there are, as you've heard Pastor Davis, but Luna Banori, who many of you know as the leader of the Islamic Civic League, the Consul General of Mexico, who was here, Jose Borhome, was an active partner as his, his current successor, Consul Barca. Um, Senator Luz Escamilla and Efren Garcia, who works on D E I for the county, are all people who are connected to the Hispanic community, which is again, one of these vulnerable and targeted communities. Um, your chair, uh, actually is a leader of the LGBTQ community and she has been one of our partners, an aspect in her predecessors in both of the organizations that represent that community. The Asian community is represented by, uh, former Senator Jamie Womoto. Um, and so I think what you can appreciate is that we're trying hard to be in touch with all of the communities that are affected by this epidemic of hate crime. But we're very action-oriented. I think your questions for the police chief, if I heard them correctly, were largely based on what happens after this teaching occurs. Um, parenthetically, I'm a physician who are required to have fifty hours of continuing education every year. Social scientists who study that phenomenon have pretty much concluded that while that adds to some information, it really doesn't change behavior in ways that we wish it would. The things that change behavior, and some of you alluded to that, they're rarely virtual experiences, but they're in-person experiences, but they're very contextual. So for example, to change the behavior of a physician, it's really important that you be where the physician is when they're doing their field. And that for a surgeon means literally in the operating room. If you wanna see things change for a clinician who works in an office, it means being in the room when they're interviewing and examining patients. And it means reviewing what they do and say and what they write in their record. And it means talking with them about things that they are doing that are incorrect or things that they are not doing, which should be done, and then revisiting them. So that you actually build into what you might call training or onsite change, the very idea that you helped them, you're, it's almost hand-holding, if you think about it. Another lovely term for that is coaching. It's a little different than teaching and it's certainly different than forcing. So it's informed coaching, but it includes following up to see the change. And there's also accountability. And we didn't talk with the visiting chief about that, but I think some of your questions included things like answering the questions. Answering questions is very important. Answering questions show that you know the information that is considered correct. It says nothing about behavior if you're in an actual situation where you have to act in concert with what you know is correct. So I just say all of that to you by background to give you a sense of kind of what we've been, who we are. Um, and time is limited, so I'll just tell you what my goals were. Michelle has a presentation and I can use that in a way to answer your questions. And that might be smart, because this is a particularly sophisticated group, I think, about hate crimes. So I don't think we need to do the sort of one-on-one version. And it always helps any speakers, you know, to know what it is wanted to know and to provide you with that. So I'll just tell you what my objectives were. They were one, to be sure that you left our session with a clear understanding of what a hate crime is, that you would have a deeper understanding of what's going on with what I alluded to as an epidemic. So information about the rates at which hate crimes are occurring, who is involved, where they are happening. And the most important part of that is to know a good deal about reporting. So I'll just say that right now for you. There are about seven to eight thousand hate crimes reported each year. We have known for a very long time that they're seriously under-reported. Anything that depends on people taking a step to report to someone else is going to be under-reported. In my field, infectious disease is under-reported, because not every person with an infection either knows that they have an infection or that it should be reported. It only gets worse if the people affected do not have trust in the people to whom they're expecting to report. So for example, we even see that in the immigrant community to the United States. For an undocumented person with an infectious disease, they actually have a disincent to go to a hospital and declare that they are there and that they are ill. They're frightened to do something about their health. So under-reporting is only exacerbated when people lack trust. So moving back to the reporting of hate crimes, I shared that there are about seven to eight thousand. They have been increasing significantly in the last ten years. And there are about four states that have seen records of hate crimes. Record meaning more than they have ever seen. And let me say, seen equals reported. Utah is one of those states. So in a state that was experiencing thirty to forty on average, you have a state that saw a hundred and fifty in the year twenty-twenty-two. So I think that achieves my objective. Uh, I'll, I'll do some defining if we need to, but you understand it's increasing nationally. It's under-reported, it's at a record level in Utah. And the actual reporting, again, social scientists would understand, is best figured out by asking people the question, rather than requiring them to tell someone else. So the Census Bureau, when they do their house-to-house interviews, has many questions, much more than just how many people live here. They have questions about health, but one of their questions is, have you experienced a hate crime or an attack based on religion, race, gender, ethnicity, disability? By looking at the results of the census survey, the Justice Department estimates that there are not seven to eight thousand hate crimes each year. There are between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand. So I think in this little short time, if people ask you, going back to the question, not the action, I think what you should be able to tell people is that there is an epidemic. It's reaching record levels in big cities and in the state of Utah. And even in the state of Utah, it's concentrated along the Mossach Front. So in our largest cities, with a little bit occurring in St. George, which is our fastest-growing city. So let me just define it and then stop for a minute and see what you would like to know about hate crimes and in particular, what we're doing and how you can help. So definition, I have to imagine, some of you are pretty familiar with that. In just simple language, how would you define or recognize what is a hate crime? I'm sorry, Lieutenant Kuff, you know, we had a super expert here. But, um, it's actually really important, even if you don't know, we should figure that out. Because, can you see how important that is? If you don't know what hate crime is, why would you be motivated to report one? Thoughts? Sure. We'll start from the back and there are a couple other comments, yeah?
Well, I think a hate crime is, is something that, uh, is based on how one is, uh, how one person, maybe, one person may be treated or a group may be treated, um, through and at the violence. Um, and that could be as far as vandalizing their home, vandalizing their car, or, or in the work environment by really, uh, doing some real things to, you know, to upset, you know, what they're doing within their own job.
So let me pick up a couple of things, cuz we're, I think one of the nice ways to build a definition, if you didn't have a written one, is to do it by adding the elements that surfaced. So first of all, you use the word group. So one concept might be, there would be the kind of a crime where instead of a single victim, there are automatically multiple. And you have some horrible highness examples of that. The worst examples of hate crimes now include attacks, I named one, of the Jewish community of worship. You would know another one in Brazil, where Islamic individuals were praying at more than one mosque and were mowed down by an automatic weapon. You would certainly know about the city of Buffalo, where exactly that same thing happened to African-Americans. And people in the Hispanic community know about El Paso, right? So yes, and, and you're absolutely right, those are hate crimes. So I wanna just pull out one thing about what you said, because hate crimes are not limited to attacks on groups, but groups are really important. What's really important, and, and we haven't used this word yet, but the motivation for the hate crime is based on something that you might find in a group. For example, color, or religion, or gender, or national origin, or the kind of clothing that they wear. So that's really an important thing to say, and I'm gonna be using that word motivation again. But the other one, I think, is that even if the attack is on a single individual, it's almost always the case that the group, your word, feels threatened. So I think thinking about groups is a very important way, uh, to think about hate crimes. And hope is clear to the last, I think you know that anyway, that it can be a hate crime if only one person is involved, because so many are threatened. But it often, in the worst case, involves attacking groups of people all at once. Sure, you have another?
I was gonna say, um, physical or verbal attacks that are based off of prejudices, um, that have like, yeah, I guess, just like based off of prejudice specifically.
So I think it's a terrific word. It's pretty interesting, you got a police chief, and some people at the table may be surprised, he's a police chief, but he's actually using history as a very powerful tool. But his presentations are about what he calls bias. And he's using the term implicit bias. So just in listening to him, I was really, really struck by the continuum between bias and what I described as the most heinous hate crimes. So I'll just tell you what I heard, and your term prejudice or discrimination should really be in this list. So bias, first of all, we need to acknowledge is actually an inherent human characteristic. There's no one at this table that comes to the table without bias. We don't get past infancy without bias. Our first bias is the image of our mom. And she means more to us based on what we see or smell than any other person at that point, right? So bias by itself helps us to distinguish things, but it can be misinformed, as the police chief said. But bias by itself, a belief without action, is not necessarily immediately dangerous, right? But it could be. So for me, in the sort of the string that I was thinking of, your word prejudice or discrimination, I think, comes to mind. Prejudice is such a good choice. Prejudice says everything in the word, it's prejudging. You don't know this person, but you look at them and they wear glasses. You know, I, I don't like this person in my room and I don't like glasses. Or I see their color, or I look at their eyes or the shape of their nose, and I've already judged them, as Police Chief Fons suggested, even maybe by where they live. If you live there, you must be lazy, right? Uh, so prejudgment is a step beyond bias, right? Because bias is almost just the inherent acknowledgement that this person is not me, right? This is, this person is not me. It's not my twin brother, it's a different person. Prejudice goes in other stuff, right? It's a different person, not as good as me, maybe even a threat to me, so prejudice. Next, I was thinking about in our schools, that can move right on to bullying, right? But now we're talking about a behavior. You feel that transition from belief, right? Something maybe very natural to action based on what could be a false belief. Then we go to harassment, which now is another epidemic, right? Which is the virtual world. So not only are kids harassed in school, but if they're using social media, it's not just kids, it's youth and it's adults, they can start getting threats and they don't even know the origin of those, right? So they're anonymous threats. So harassment is again, an action and it's a more threatening action. And then if you take the next step, I think for me, uh, it would be actual threats, which by the way, takes us back to the idea of crime. Everything that I've said so far about bias, or even sometimes name-calling, doesn't rise to the level of, of crime. So there are lots of things that can be, and I think you used the word in the workplace, that people may be offended or upset by what's happening. We don't know yet if that's a crime, but it certainly probably stems from bias and it could be thought of as harassment. Threats are yet another level. They're actually the connector between words, beliefs and actions. If I say to you, "You're stupid," I mean, that really hurts. I mean, I don't want people saying that to me, but it's not a crime. If I say, "You're stupid," and I kill stupid people, suddenly I've crossed the line. So what I've just done is threaten someone with bodily harm. And sort of back to your point, whether it's an individual or a group, I can say a lot of offensive things, we need to deal with those, but they don't rise to the level of crimes or hate crimes. But a threat is an excellent way for everyone to suddenly realize, "You don't need to touch me to commit a hate crime." Are you with me? So if you threaten to hurt me, you've now crossed the line. It becomes a hate crime if my reason for you is based on a characteristic that is inherent in you and your community and not personal. If you just cheated me in some sale that you made and I say, "I'm really mad at you." The car you sold me doesn't run. You, you know what, it's stolen and I'm gonna push you around. I'm committing a crime when I threaten to hurt you, but it's not a hate crime. Do you see the distinction? So to kind of pull that together, in order to be a hate crime, it actually has to rise to the level of a crime. It must be a crime first. And then if you discover that the reason for the crime is a bias, a prejudice, a hatred of a complete group of people, and the reason that you're hurting that one person, it's not because of what he did to you, it's because of the group, by the way, that you believe he belonged to. You can commit a hate crime where it's in the state. The Asians are a really good example of that. We had national rhetoric about the origin of the virus coming from China. And suddenly, anyone from And suddenly anyone from any part of the Asian world was threatened and sometimes attacked. They were attacked because someone thought they were Chinese. It might have been Japanese or Indian or Sikh. But are you with me? Can you see the motivation? So the motivation begins with hatred and it can even be mistaken. That doesn't make it not a hate crime, okay? Your point was prejudice, you had a comment about what's a hate crime.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, can I get one second, JB? We have about ten more minutes.
You can do it. Thank you for that.
No, yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna say an offense that rises to be, you know, that rises to where it'd be a crime punished by criminal right against all of my criminal sanctions and also motivated by hate, by typically, I mean, you were typically what we think of as like benefit protected statuses are often um when, when it would uh rise to all of the hate crimes. So like you said, like race, religion, gender, gender identity.
And they're actually made. And so one of the things that's interesting about hate crimes is in order to be prosecuted, the group needs to be in statute. And so one of the things that has happened over time is we've had to add groups. So for example, the earliest hate crimes in the United States, our longest history probably is with African-Americans. We had a young man in Wyoming who was killed and just laid out on a fence because he was gay. So we had to then add that. The most recent addition has been disability, which again changed, it's just evidence that this kind of hatred just keeps expanding, right? Nothing goes off the table, but new things come on. So her point is just superb. The Utah statute is actually quite bizarre in some ways. It includes, finally, after fourteen years, all of the category is recognized by the federal government and by forty-five other states for almost thirty years. But then it added a few. So things like law enforcement show up as a potential target of hate. And the word matriculation may be there. I just smile as I tell you that that was the idea, that someone might be attacked in Utah because of which college they went to. So what I will tell you is that in order to pass legislation, sometimes you have to make some compromises. But we're very lucky that we have that. Because Michelle told me that our time is limited, I would just tell you, you all meet the first objective. Are you, does anyone have any questions or do you have trouble explaining to someone else what a hate crime is? Sure?
I just have a question a little bit off of that, but if someone were to report a hate crime, does, what are like the current steps that like the law enforcement follow that for that?
So it's just a great question. I'm so sorry that the police chief is not here. Something for you to know and share with your communities is this came from the police chief to us. He is well aware of this terrible deficit in reporting. In the language of the police chief, that isn't, that isn't reported, we can't do anything about it. So from a police department perspective, they would much rather have more reports, including reports that may not turn out to be crimes, but that's much better than not knowing. He is working hard and has just recently appointed a woman on the police force, a captain, as the leader of their new hate crimes division. That would be a division appointed, but it will be a particular person with responsibility for this. It's not that no one was responsible, it just didn't have a name. When he came, as he volunteered to do to our community, the Jewish community, to meet with youth and their parents to talk about this, he brought a lieutenant who is the chief of the detectives division. So the detective answered your question that was asked. People wanna take your name, phone number and where they can reach you. If you've seen a hate crime, you can actually report that anonymously, but you should give them enough information so that they get investigated. The next step is they do in fact investigate it if it's time urgent. And you say there's someone breaking into my home or burning a cross on my lawn. They dispatch police officers to where you tell them to go. If you tell them something happened three days ago, they will dispatch someone in a day to talk to you and then follow up with the people that you tell them about. The first assessment is whether what you're reporting is actually a crime, exactly what we talked about tonight. If it's not a crime, what we're working with them to do is assign people like social workers to talk with the victim. Even if it doesn't rise to a crime, someone is pretty upset. So we really wanna see those services, I would call that in development. It's also about resources. There are some of those people, but whether they could be available to all of those callers, we don't know yet. If in fact it qualifies as a crime, then it goes over to detectives, from the police officers to the detectives who investigate it. The crimes that are reported to the FBI are reported regardless of whether they found the offender. The reports are to let people know that there is a crime of this kind that's been committed. So the investigation they want, it may find the perpetrator or it may not. If the perpetrator is found, they involve the county attorney and the individual is charged. Last thing I wanna say about hate crimes is that the real importance of a hate crime is actually after the person is charged and tried and convicted. What hate crimes do is add to the amount of sentencing that is prescribed for the offense. So we'll just do, I apologize for looking straight at you, but I'm gonna do this. I threatened you, I threatened you with bodily harm, you reported it to the police, they investigated. They actually talked to the people who were at the table when I threatened you. So they have witnesses and I'm taken to court and I'm convicted of, it's assault. It's intimidation, it's, it could be considered threatened murder, depends on what I said. The jury decides that I'm guilty. The judge, because it's in the category called a hate crime, can either elevate the crime with its misdemeanor, it can be turned into a felony. It's a first degree offense, it can be made, a second, it can be made first. And the years of sentencing requested by the judge can be graded. So are you with me? So that's where hate crimes, at the end of the day, is important. But it also sends a message to a whole community that if an individual has hurt even one individual, but it's because they're angry or hateful to the community, there's actually something in law and statute that says that's a more serious crime. I wanna stop with hate crimes. The other thing that we wanna do is publish a booklet, which we did in nineteen nineteen, uh twenty nineteen, which actually tells the public a lot of what I've just shared with you. And it also has statistics about what's happening nationally, in the state and in our city and county. It also tells people where to report and how to report. And it even has a little section that says what to expect if you report a hate crime. So I think our purpose in coming to you was A, making you aware that we exist. And I think we could work synergistically with you. And B, to ask for your support. That is, when you report back to the mayor's office and to the police chief, just indicate that, that you've heard about this and you would like to see our community become a community that actually leads the country. It's a little paradoxical, but if we actually are reporting more hate crimes and we know more about them, we actually can make the claim that we're doing more about them. And let me really emphasize how important that is. If you have a youth in a school who reports that there's a senior student who threatened him and we can intervene with that student, use the social services that are available, hopefully keep him out of jail, that's a student that we hope will not be a year later or two years later carrying a gun into a mosque or a church or a group of people that look different than he is. So that's kind of two things. One, we want to increase reporting, we'd want to do that through using PSAs. Do we have a minute left?
Yeah, about so, um, I think Commissioner McDonald, did you have a question online? I didn't wanna.
I, I do, I just have a quick question. So I see that um, that you do work with our local, our state representative, Representative Owens to pass the um, the bill for the, for Utah State. Do you work with our congressional delegation? I, I know that Debbie Washington representative, um Debbie Washington shows had a resolution in Congress last, um, the last session, Congress one seventeen, I think. Do, do you work with our federal um delegation as well?
So I really appreciate the question and your comment on Representative Owens to share with the group. We brought a number of Utah legislators, elected officials and appointed officials and the leaders of minority communities to Pittsburgh to go to something called the Eradicate Hate Global Summit. Coming out of that, we were aware of both federal initiatives and other state initiatives and worked with Representative Owens, who was able to in this session get a bill drafted that would be similar to the Oregon statewide program for reporting. If we have a minute left, I'll actually share that with you, but if not, you've heard it. Um, I can't predict what the fate of that bill will be in our state legislature, no one can. We would always welcome the support of every um governance unit in the state and every minority community to see that we pass it. It took fourteen years to pass a meaningful hate crime statute in Utah. So I can tell you that I'm really optimistic, but it has to get started. I am so much more hopeful, um Commissioner, that our local mayor and police chief are incredibly receptive to this. And I think conceivably, if we started at the city, oh, let me at the county attorney, Sim Gil. They are all huge advocates of increased reporting. And if we do it and it's working in the largest city and county in the state, I think that would be helpful at the state level. And so that's basically our approach. We would love your support for doing this in our city and then maybe using that as a model for statewide. Michelle, is there a minute left?
Um, I think Commissioner Sal was our call. If you wanted to just share your comment that you shared with me, you can probably do it more justice.
Oh, I just provided the links for the federal hate crime statute and uh Utah's enhancement statute. We don't have a true hate crime statute in Utah, it's just an enhancement to the crime as, as our presenter indicated. So one thing I guess any of us could do is try to lobby our legislature to institute an actual hate crime statute, but given the tenor of this last legislative session, um, I am not incredibly hopeful that one would actually pass.
So first of all, I really appreciate your point and that clarification. Um, County Attorney Gil joined our partners and representatives from many other governments, units in testifying in support of what we've come to call a meaningful hate crime statute. And again, speaking from the perspective of the county attorney, some of you would remember an attack on a young Mexican man. Uh, his last name is Lopez. He worked in a tire shop owned by his family and a man came carrying basically a pipe saying, I'm here to kill a Mexican. Uh, by your definition, by our definition, that's pretty obvious, isn't it? It's a threat, it was more than a threat, it was a deed. So this young man almost died and County Attorney Gil could not charge him with a hate crime statute because Utah had not yet passed the law or referred to. What I would tell you Commissioner is that the county attorney feels quite comfortable that he can now charge that crime in Utah with our statute. You're absolutely right, there are differences, but I, I have to defer to his judgment and I think that was a huge step forward. Last thing I would say is that there were three hate crimes reported in Salt Lake City in twenty twenty-two. Remember what I told you about reporting? Two hundred and fifty thousand versus seven, the ratio's about thirty-one. So if three crimes were reported and charged, that means there might have been as many as ninety, most of which we don't know about. So I think we have a tool, it may not be a perfect tool, but we have to make more use of that. Michelle, any other comments or is there?
I think that's all we have, did, did you have one last thought?
I was, I was gonna say one is the thing, one of the things that he does, he has to educate people. And so I'll say that on, on the short side, but I think that uh, you know, if we get more people involved with it, we really have to educate them. You know, this is great that we're, we're bringing this, you know, some of the education about hate crimes. But I think as a whole in communities, people have to know and understand.
So that's, I just so appreciate it. Question is a great idea and I'm gonna speak for the chief because he is so enthusiastic about this. He makes himself available now to a targeted community that would like to have him come and he can bring the staff, he brought the detective, soon he's, she's gonna be on the train, we see the captain. But he will bring her to answer questions in the community. What I would like to have also is a tool that he can distribute that leaves behind all of this information for everyone there. And we met with the mayor's staff and um, let's see, Jennifer Newell, who's her leader on education, who's very supportive of bringing these printed copies to high schools and doing programs that will serve to educate. So you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you, Jay, for your time. Um, I will send the video in a minute as well as the links that Commissioner Sal was our call at tenta. I'll include all of those helpful links and resources in the minute and I'll send it out to you all.
Zero hours, zero minutes and zero seconds.
It's okay, no, it's okay. Okay, lastly, before we wrap up, um, so subcommittee meeting invites have been tented out, so make sure you keep a lookout for that. Our training subcommittee um did happen on Monday, however, we tabled to have it next Wednesday. So they will have a better update in order to give them enough time to review the information. Um, but other than that, everything on the agenda are the subcommittee times set in stone and I have sent out those calendar invites. Um, we won't have a tentative co-session this meeting and our next meeting will be on April thirteenth. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Make that motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Cowherd and a second. Commissioner Durante, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's nice seeing all of your lovely faces oxygened next month or at subcommittees. Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.